I'm showing that it's 5:30. May I have a roll call?
Mayor Kocov.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Ms. Darrow and Mr. Kocov are asked it.
All right, we don't have minutes tonight, so let's start off with the first proposal, which is a new non-illuminated ground sign for Chicago title. Albert, come on down, talk to us a little bit.
Well, I'm not Albert. My name's Tommy Agvich. I'm with Hallett Sign Company. I'll be pitching to you for Mr. Hadad tonight.
Harvey, you're down here a couple of times.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, we have some comments that are from our planner. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated August 10th, 2014. The applicant is requesting a 3.25 by five foot, which is 16.25 square feet, ground monument sign in front of their property located at 360 East Highland. Relative to the zoning code, section 1179.07B permits 40 square feet for a ground monument sign. With regard to the setback, it's restricted to the height of the sign or five feet, whichever is greater. In this case, the sign is proposed at 4.75 feet and the setback is 10 feet, so that complies with the code. The area being proposed, again, is 16.25 square feet and 40 is permitted by the code. Therefore, the proposal complies. The sign itself is situated on a stone base and flowers are proposed as landscaping around the base. My only recommendation is, in addition to the flowers, that applicants should add some low-lying bushes around the base. It gives it more of a permanent landscaping feel. Other than that, I would recommend approval.
All right, do we have any questions or comments from the commissioners? Picture looked real nice to me. Is this a sample of stone?
Yeah, that's a sample of stone. It's, um, okay. It's a hand ledge, what they call it. Yeah. It's an aluminum fabricated sign. The copy on the top would be a dimensional lettering flat cut from a half-inch PVC plastic. The bottom would be a separate panel with vinyl copy. And it would have aluminum pad to the masonry base.
Okay. All right, we have a recommendation to approve. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, but I have seconds. I have a motion in second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? There you go. Thank you very much. We'll see you again soon.
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is under canopy blade signs for Mastoni Commons. Do we have anybody here for that one? No?
Is there any for anybody that would be here or not in here?
Well, I think they're just upgrading them, updating them, the way I read it. Am I remembering?
They're just like changing the image on the sign.
Yeah. I don't think it's any big deal and what's your pleasure on this, commissioners? You want to wait till like?
Oh, with doing so with it, I'm okay with doing so with it. It's not a big kind of level space problem with it, but yeah, I'm okay with it. I think they're gonna get tenant today. I don't like them as much. I mean, it's not a logo anymore. It's just, it's just plain copy. But maybe, you know, look.
Yeah, I guess my only feeling is I think these people should be here if they're proposing this stuff. You know, I've mentioned that before. It's not a big deal on this one, but I think if we do it for one, then we gotta start doing it for others. And I just think they should always be at the meeting.
So you're not in favor moving forward?
I would rather have somebody here at the meeting from their company.
No problem. Well, let's move on. Proposed ground sign permit for extra lease at Highland Road. Hi, how you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Are you Mary Ann?
How are you?
Hi.
Okay, we have some comments from our planners.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo dated August 10th, 2014. The applicant's requesting to construct a four-foot by six-foot or 24 square feet ground monument sign in front of their property located at 1211 East Highland. The property is Zoned General Industrial District. Based on my review of the application and the code, I offer a few comments to the planning commission. The sign, relative to the sign for compliance with section 117907B of the code, which permits 40 square feet for a ground monument sign, the proposal is for 24 square feet. So with regard to the area, the sign is appropriate. The setback, again, is restricted to the height of the sign or five feet. This sign is 4.66 feet tall and the proposed setback is 35 feet. So again, the area and the setback are acceptable. The sign is proposed between two cultured stone piers resting on top of a high-density urethane base. No landscaping at this time is proposed around the base. There appears to be two existing ground signs on the subject site. The first sign is for advanced rental and the second sign appears to be for advanced rental, extra lease, and one other tenant. What I can't readily determine is whether both signs are proposed for removal or just one sign. The concern is that section 117907B states that one ground sign is permitted per project or development. And 117905 exempted prohibited signs B6 prohibits off-premise signs. And off-premise signs are defined by the code as signs that may only be located, they may only be located on the building or premises containing the activity that is advertised. And so in this case, there's, I think, three parcels that are part of this sort of complex, if you will. And the parcel that the building that's being advertised is a long, like, flag-shaped parcel and it appears that the sign is on the neighboring parcel, a smaller rectangular parcel. In such case, the way the code reads, the sign would have to be on the parcel that is sort of the flag-shaped parcel and advertising for the business that's located on. And then my last comment relates to the landscaping. I do recommend the planning commission consider some type of landscaping, again, low-lying shrubs or flowers around the base. So at this time, I suggested more information be provided about the intent of the two signs. If the applicant agrees that both signs are being removed, then the proposal can be approved with the stipulation that I recommended landscaping, if the commission has found that acceptable. If the intent is to maintain two ground monument signs on the one rectangular site, then a variance from the code would be needed.
Okay, what's the plan?
When I spoke with the client today, they said that they will be removed off of the second, the ground sign that has the advanced rental and excavating, extra lease will come off of that sign. There are two addresses, two separate addresses for this property and two separate buildings, is my understanding. So extra lease takes up one building and the excavating and advanced rental is another building and another address. So they would only have one sign for their address, which they wanted to have located. So I think the advanced rental sign that is within that rectangular planting bed is the one that would be removed. The other won't be existing, but would remain there for the other building and the other address.
So the, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the one closest to the driveway is being slated for removal?
No, the one closest to the driveway is staying. That's the one that will be utilized for advanced excavating and rental. And for that two, I think the address is 1201 over there. So the 1211, which will be extra lease, will be in that triangular planting bed.
Which is for the?
For extra lease.
Is that the building on the square right behind the rectangle?
Right.
Or the building in the back on the flotting?
Yeah, they share the same driveway, I guess. There's a, there's a, what do you call it?
Is the building on the right its extra lease? And the two on the left is?
Access driveway. Yeah. Easy, man.
Easy, man.
There you go. That's the word.
Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, what we're talking about is because the code has this off-premise regulation, prohibition against off-premise signs, we're just trying to find a way to be able to make it palatable and be within the code. Though I don't see any issue with the sign itself, but again, there is this prohibition, you know, in the zoning code that would prohibit it from advertising for a back property. One way around that would be, and it would be a good suggestion regardless, is to combine those two lots into one.
What side of the road is it on, north or south?
North side.
North side.
I think that they felt that they, because they have a separate address and a separate building and they pay separate taxes, you know, it's just a whole separate thing. Just because they shared the same driveway, I think they felt that that was the only connection they had with that other business.
So what you're saying, Brian, is that I can't put a sign on Rita's lot? Is that basically what you're saying?
Right.
What if Rita says, okay?
The way the code is written, off-premise signs are prohibited. So if Ms. Darrow said, you had adjoining lots, and she said, you could put a sign on my lot to advertise your business, that would be prohibited by our zoning code. It has to be on the premise that the business activity has taken place.
So there's no letter of permission, anything? It's just you can't do this?
Yeah, it's a prohibition through the code. So how it would, generally how this would work is they'd go for a variance to get an exception to that requirement. Or in this case, I do think that another alternative would be if they combined those two lots, the square and the rectangle, which actually would make it more palatable under the code, because then it would give the building more, it would give the frontage on the main road.
Or if Vance bought that building right in front that's for sale, then he would have rogue frontage. There's another small building, electric company's in, it's right up by the street. I believe it's for sale.
It's this one here? I think it's been sold.
Oh, really?
I think so.
And there's no way to locate this here because?
No, it's all driveway.
It's a driveway.
Yeah.
Sometimes change brings things to light that have existed but aren't necessarily correct, and then we have a problem like this. One of the options you have is to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And if the Board of Zoning Appeals says fine, well, then you can go ahead as long as it comes back here and is approved. Although, we could make a conditional approval, perhaps that they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that we're approving the concept.
Yeah.
And that would saber a trip back.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. I, again, I don't, I don't see any issue with the sign in terms of the area and all the performance requirements. So if it's approved from the Board of Zoning Appeals, if the commission finds it acceptable to sign, which it does comply with the code substantially except for this issue, then there would really be no reason for them to come back.
Other than the landscaping.
Other than landscaping, which typically the commission, again, I don't want to speak for you, but typically the commission has allowed, administratively allowed, that type of a review to occur.
When you get to, when you're on that road now, it's a very busy road and there's a lot of traffic, so we want to look sharp. So I would say that would be conditional to, you want to see something with the shrubs or something next to the signs, flowers or something. Because there's a lot, a lot, a lot of.
Is this her sign too? The same people?
So if we make it conditional, you can move forward to the VZA, all right? And then if the VZA gives your approval, then you can move forward. You don't have to come back to plan. And that would be, so that we don't inconvenience you by tabling it until you go through all the rest of this, you would just be done with us. That's one option. Go ahead.
The applicant's extra lease, is that their property intended?
I know one had an extra on it.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, because it's only one ground sign you want. You don't want two ground signs.
Well, I'm trying to understand, is it, so there are two or three separate addresses on one property? Is that what I'm to understand is correct, then?
Are you talking about two signs or one sign?
Well, I'm talking about that if extra lease has their own address and the other building has its own address, is that not two parcels then? So wouldn't that not be considered, I'm confused with that. Any clarification? Wouldn't that just be, if extra lease is at 1211 and we're proposing a sign at 1211, that's one sign at 1211? And then the excavating company is at 1201, so would that be one sign at 1201? Or I don't know where the discrepancy is.
See, this one sign had an extra on it and I just assumed you were going to replace this sign. Is that what you're doing?
I think that the 1201 sign is on the 1211's property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Both those signs are on the property from 1211. 1201, do they not have any frontage? Their?
It's all driveway.
Okay, their property is the driveway and then their property back there.
Oh, okay. So they have no front?
They do, but it's all driveway. It's all their property. So they couldn't stick it on their property, that's why it's sitting there. Their property is only a driveway in that. So that sign really should be here, but that's the driveway.
So it's really extra lease's sign, or I'm sorry, it's Vance's sign that's really on extra lease's property?
Yes.
So extra lease, they are correct in putting their sign up where it is and they're all within code, but because Vance is sitting on their property, that's why they're having trouble getting it approved. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, and I don't know if they've got some kind of internal agreement, oh yeah, you could put your sign here and stuck it up in some way.
It's all owned by the same person.
Oh, so it's all of the same person?
So it's all owned by Berkshire Hathaway right now, is that, or owned by a different owner, by the owner of the property?
When I looked today, all three parcels are owned by Kowalski.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what you're suggesting.
Okay, so they're tenants, so all three are tenants in different buildings, but the property's owned by one company. Okay.
Well, that seems to me like almost, you know, a no-brainer, the same guy has all that property and not having two, you're not going to have a conflict. But sometimes when we go through this, like for instance, if you're going to remodel, build it, when you go through that, you have to do it the way we want it now and before the building was a little incited today, it would have to be.
Right.
So sometimes when you go through making some changes, something comes to light that we can't allow to proceed, because if we do, then it would be setting a precedent. That's why I allow something to exist by law.
So when these were approved, was the code not in?
It might not have been. There's a lot of things that, for instance, if it was on the other side of the road, the zoning was changed, all kinds of things happened over there, but not that side of the road, it didn't. So I'm pretty sure all the rules have been that way for a while. I know the owner, I know those people, there's not a problem, except that if we allow this to move forward, we set a precedence, because by, see, we have to have a professional tell us where we're at in the game.
But this is, so this is a little bit of a unique situation, being that they have no frontage, so that might be the case.
It might be something that the VZA might consider. Although having all the same owner, if I was on the VZA, I don't know, I'd be, I'd be a little bit, I might say, well, why don't you just build, build a little bit bigger and make it for all the businesses you got back there, put one sign up, it's all your property. It seems like that.
That's a good thought.
Yeah.
You know, make it for all the businesses back there.
I guess the only thing would be that it's kind of confusing, because it's a different building, so usually you have, you know, maybe have.
Yeah, well, that can happen, but up and down Highland Road, it's not unusual to have different businesses on the sign, but I think all of them are in the same building, you know.
I'm sure there's some, or there's some kind of sign on the building there.
Well, we're just making suggestions to try and help you.
I'd love to say I didn't write the bill, but I did.
And we can move forward with the conditional.
I think we could, which, you know, we could approve conditionally, assuming the VZA has a, we could approve, assuming that the second sign is taken down, we could table it, let you go to the VZA or the owner and see what you want with it.
Yeah, but then she'd have to come back.
I think maybe it's approval with the VZA, VZA approval, and if in the meantime, you talk to the owner and they say, no, I don't understand, we're holding the plan for the whole thing, then you gotta come back, but maybe without the VZA.
That's about the best we can do to that.
Yeah, I'll bring it down. I think conditional approval upon VZA is approval. I'll make a motion.
Second? I'm okay with it?
All right, so actually, that's a motion and that's a second. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do you hear what we're doing?
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve conditionally, go on to the VZA and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? There you go, young lady. Thank you. Okay, next is a proposed signing for Western Reserve Grace Church at 1066. And here you come again.
Right.
Any of you? Put a slogan in your name, is that something?
Service.
Service, okay.
We'll stole it here.
Yeah. All right, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my memo dated August 10th. The applicant is requesting to increase the overall size of an existing wall sign on the building located at 1066 East Aurora Road. The proposal is to add the words Grace Church at the end of the Western Reserve portion of the sign, which will ultimately read Western Reserve Grace Church. The revised wall sign will be approximately 30 feet long and the height of the Western Reserve letters appears to be about two feet and the height of the Grace Church letters is about 1.16 feet. The total area of the revised wall sign is approximately 40.44 square feet. Section 117903F2 of the code permits two square feet of identification for each lineal foot of building frontage. The applicant's tenant frontage in this case, as shown on their submittal, is 60 feet, which provides them with 120 square feet of identification signage. The code, the code does provide an additional allotment for more square footage based on, based on sites that have additional frontage. In this case, it's not necessary, because the proposal is just over 40 square feet and even just based on the requirement of two square feet for each lineal foot, providing them with 120, the sign more than complies. So at this point, I recommend that approval of this is submitted.
Any questions or comments, commissioners? There are none, do we have a motion?
I guess, is there any other, there's no other outstanding issues with the church landscaping or anything like that? I have a question.
Not that I remember right now.
They've complied with everything.
Sure.
Yeah, because I've been in all the meetings. They've done everything that's been asked of them.
I'm informed that everything's in compliance. Okay, because it took a while to start.
All right, can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the sign revision.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, there you go. All right. Next is a proposed sign for Sinorama. That you, Brian? Okay. All right, Brian, you have some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sinorama is moving from their current location in the Macedonia Town Square to 9862 Freeway Drive, Unit B. The new location is the plaza that was recently approved for some building facade improvement. The proposed wall sign, 2.08 feet by 14.41 feet or 30.02 square feet, is comprised of individual white channel letters with black trim. Again, going to the code and looking at the tenant frontage, the permissible amount of signage is 60 square feet. Therefore, this proposal will move the current sign to the new location, complies with the limitation of code and can be approved this summer.
Any questions, comments?
It'd be kind of funny if we approved a new gable for the sign, like you said on the sign, but, okay. Make a motion.
I don't think he probably finds it funny.
I seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There you go. That didn't take too long. And we got a laugh out of you, right? All right, see you. Sure. All right, next we have proposed zoning code change related to accessory structure. We don't have any comments on this.
Did you get a copy of it?
I did. Yeah, language was cleaned up and passed through the Law Department, so I found no concerns about the structure of the language.
Wow, that's a first for Sylvia.
Yeah, really? Okay, well, it is, was put on first reading on July 24th, so there's no other comments that we need to endorse or what?
I think what we need to do is wait for the public hearing and then we can go after the rap.
There's going to be a public hearing there.
Right. On the 28th.
On the 28th, is that what it is?
On what day?
The 28th of August. Because it's going to go before the public that night and let it wash out and then we can just move forward from that point. Okay? Very good, thank you.
Did you think of looking to, like, answer anything else, any other way to get around this, or is this separate, being on it pretty good, this is the only thing?
Well, if this isn't relative to Havlicek's barn on his property, he's been given a tentative approval to have that barn on that property from the VZA as soon as the property is inspected. This man's going to inspect it. He's trying to set up an appointment with Mr. Havlicek. If once it's inspected, Don says, no problem, there's no problem, it's approved by the VZA, conditional on it being inspected. Okay?
So that, approved by them, so this doesn't need?
Yeah, you can still do it. Council can still introduce ordinances and resolutions and so can the mayor.
So this situation is handled as soon as it's backed. This is for, I guess, in the future?
In the future.
In the future.
Future issues, right.
Yes, so we don't have to go through that again. What's, what's the, I mean, about the tree thing?
Well, what we're going to do as far as the next item is we're going to strike it from the agenda. It will appear next month Chanel, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
So you, there's no discussion?
Jim doesn't have the materials ready yet to present. You will have it next time.
Yeah, I mean, they have to do it.
All right, I believe that's the last of the items for tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, per the chapter or section 1141.03 of the code, the planning commission does need to make a formal recommendation back to council within 30 days of receiving the document, so. So, um.
We, we've received the li- the legislation, so we need to make an approval.
You need to make some sort of a recommendation on that legislation back to council within thirty days of receiving it. So I, if the commission was ready, they could make that this evening. And I don't know if your next meeting would be within that thirty days that the code gives you, which means you probably should make a recommendation tonight.
All right, so then that changes the whole plan. All right, uh, any discussion on this other than that, Kevin?
We do, uh, I mean, we need four weeks, which, you know, run of the thirty days, but I guess, what do you say when we receive it? Received it, guy who received it previously, you know, we got it at the last meeting. Actually, didn't it? We actually handed that at the last meeting, so we've had it for two weeks already, two weeks.
Seventeen days.
Seventeen days, so, so we would have to.
The way the, the way the language reads says the planning commission shall consider the referral of an ordinance from council or the filing of an application at the first regular meeting after receiving the same and shall, within thirty days after such meeting, approve, disapprove or make suggestions concerning a proposed amendment.
So thirty days from today, correct, Brian?
Yeah, and that's definitely one way, definitely one way to read it, that you would have thirty days from today is when you received it to make that recommendation, which would be your next meeting.
Well, all right, um, to have discussion on it, I know right now that there are members of the Board of Zoning Appeals that will appear at that meeting for the public hearing that are against this. All right, um, the Board of Zoning.
How do you know they're against it?
Because they told me.
Oh, okay, just wondering.
They're what?
They were here before.
Yes.
But they weren't here right now, ever since BZA, that's all changed. So now this is different, so I was just wondering how I knew they were.
It's not different because BZA had a problem with an accessory building being on a lot. You could actually build a barn right next door to somebody's house and it would be okay. You could build anything that was an accessory structure next to somebody's home and that would be okay. So the BZA was against that. The problem with the Havlicek barn's been resolved almost. The last thing left is to get the approval of the safety inspection of the property.
Now that the BZA's now going to comment and they're against this, uh.
They're against absolutely allowing this kind of structure to be built on a, an accessory structure built on a residential lot.
All right.
Uh, yeah, but Don, the point of the legislation is to permit, uh, permit a situation in which there is an existing legal structure and we then have a non-conforming situation because of the house being demolished, but the accessory structure is still being in good shape and not being destroyed. That's the whole point of the legislation. So it's different from any concern about just a general thought about building a barn.
Yeah, and no house. It's a totally different situation.
Well, I would like to see how that plays out with the Board of Zoning Appeals members, all right? They were not.
I don't have a problem with that, I just don't, they're not, we're not arguing about the same point, that's all I'm saying. And in the case of, the Board of Zoning Appeals did approve, you know, the, the structure conditional upon an inspection, I guess by Don or somebody over there. And so the very thing.
They did that on the recommendation of me, that they approved it. And when that happened, it actually set a precedent. So legislation is not really needed when you have a precedent. You could go to court and fight that.
In, in fact, if we put this legislation through, it'll basically settle the situation. We won't have further developments in this area. But it's only, my only point is this, it's only about when there have been conforming structures, not building one that isn't right from the beginning on an empty lot. We're just talking about a much narrower situation, that's it. The one that they did approve at the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this just makes us a long-term ordinance that modifies what we've had in the past, which led to the incident with Havlicek.
So what is the legislation that actually was approved by the zoning, one of the Board of Zoning Appeals?
The legislation right now states, or the, the codified state, that you cannot have an accessory structure without having a main structure on the property. Havlicek's case resulted as the main structure came down because it was in extremely poor shape and it was condemned. So they had to take it down. Now, uh, after they took it down, barn, nobody ever said anything about the barn from the city, all right? Then a resident came in and complained. Once a resident complains, then it sets the wheel into progress where we have to address the situation. So what's barn located, where it's located is, it's almost, uh, buffered from sight. I mean, you really, really got to look for it to see it because of shrubs, all the rest of those things. Um, it was going to cost Mr. Havlicek thirty-five thousand dollars to have the barn destroyed. I thought that was a little bit excessive and it, there was some confusion because there were two accessory structures. One was the tool shed and one was a barn. And the tool shed, Mr. Havlicek fixed, it was really bad. All right, so that only leaves the barn. So it was my feeling that this is turning into a mountain out of a molehill because we were going to go to court over this. So I brought it to the BZA's attention, had them come back in, had council waive the fee to go before the BZA so Mr. Havlicek would come back without paying another fee and get the result. And the result was the Board of Zoning Appeals will say, you will be grandfathered in, you will not have to take the barn down, but we're concerned that there might not be, that there might be something there to make it unsafe for the neighbors, so you must have it inspected. If it passes the inspection, you'll never have to worry about taking it down.
Okay.
So that's where it is today.
And where, what we're doing here is we are, uh, basically creating legislation to prevent it from happening again.
Mm-hmm, good, okay.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, what are we going to do on this? That's right.
Oh, that's right.
If we're saying that we can interpret that to mean thirty days from now, you think that's reasonable?
Yeah, we got to clarify.
When did Sylvia bring this? So it's already into seventeen days?
Well, thirty days after today's meeting.
They're starting from today's meeting with the thirty days.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
The, the commission's had no past practice relative to this topic, so I suggest going forward, the practice be that when the commission receives an application, that starts the thirty day time clock. And I made notes in my book that, that reflects the same. And I think that that's, um, you know, my review and interpretation of code, that's perfectly acceptable, particularly given the fact you've never had this situation come up. So if the commission finds acceptable, going forward, any applications for text change to the code, um, once you receive the application, then you have the thirty days in which to act on it.
When you receive it or at the meeting?
At the meeting, the night of the meeting, that technically is when they receive it.
Right.
If the commission finds that acceptable.
So do we have, we may have to have a motion for that, obviously, correct?
It would be good to document it in the minutes.
All right, why don't we do that before I leave?
I guess, you know, I don't know what we'd need another thirty days on it for is what I'd be questioning.
Yeah, I mean, we can make a decision tonight.
So that it, it would be, it would be at the next council meeting?
No, we'll make a decision as to a recommendation right now.
Or, or unless we decide to do it at the next planning commission meeting, which would still be within thirty days from now.
Does it, does it, we want to get the input, hear what the input is or get, you have to get minutes or something from the council meeting?
Well, I can have Janelle follow up on that so that you get all that because that we won't have another meeting here this month. We'll have next month and then you can see what the recommendations or what happened out of that legislation. If the legislation passed, if it didn't pass, what the input was.
Could we possibly say something else?
Uh, my, my only concern would be, so on a recommendation of, uh, review of a text change to the code, and I, I, I don't have your charter in front of me, but typically if it's a disapproval recommendation from the planning commission, typically, most charters read that it requires a super majority of council to then pass that language within the zoning code. I don't, I don't know how your language reads, that'd be the only caution. I'm sorry?
I don't think it reads.
Well, then that, that would be important to discuss before the meeting.
Would you like us to get a charter right now? There's one sitting right there, right outside the office right here, would you like a charter? Brian?
I, I'd be glad to look at it for you, absolutely.
Sylvia, you got your key? It's on the shelf right there just before Josephine's office.
Do you want to do this now?
I'm just, I.
Well, he needs a copy of it, he should see it.
Well, I know.
But does that matter to us, what it would take for council to pass it?
Well, the thirty days is not the question, the thirty, the question is do we approve or disapprove of this concept? I mean, whether, whether it says.
I, I make a motion that we approve the concept so that we can, I have to go, I have to go, I have to go to, uh.
All right, we have a motion to approve the concept. Do I have a second?
I think we have a lot of questions yet and I think we need to have those clarified before we go voting on this. So I would hold off on my motion.
I'm not going to second it.
Well, you're going to be back in thirty days, we're going to be coming back and discussing it in thirty days plus the minutes. So it's not like something that is going to happen at the next town.
No, but I just don't think we should be seconding it now because you have to leave. I mean, I think we have to discuss it and finalize it with an intelligent decision. If we don't have the time now, then, if we don't, can I finish? If we don't have the time now, then I think we, we make it another time, within the thirty days.
Okay, this particular legislation, Sylvia has been here several times to put this through. This is not something that just came before us. That's my opinion on that one.
But we have also, you know, there is a public hearing coming up.
Right.
Well, there were, you know, that's not a hundred percent the situation. The situation is that there was a problem that was addressed and solved and now the most, the legislation is going forward anyway. That's the situation. At the time this was first brought to us, there was a problem, so that's why we resolved it.
Regardless, council is allowed to write legislation and make changes to, to things. So regardless of what anybody feels, it, that's the reality of it and it can go.
But nobody's disputing that.
Yeah, we've got an answer, they can't introduce legislation.
I understand.
Just don't know if it's a good idea. I don't know that we've, you know, that it was brought, it was originally initiated because there was an issue, issue went away. Should all the issues be dealt with in that manner or should it be done in this manner? And with the legislation, or should, should all these, every time it comes up, go to the BZA?
What's best for Macedonia? It, what's best for Macedonia as a community?
That one was looked at, it was a beautiful structure, as you said, it's, it's in good shape barring, uh, the inspection, it's going to be fine to go through. What if the next one, they tear it down, a house, and there's one that's, eh, it's kind of a piece of crap.
Well, that's a different problem, Kevin, because, uh, there wasn't a question of some, a structure that was dilapidated or anything. It was just a question of was, was there a need to tear down the structure irregardless of the good condition of the thing? That was the question.
But the structure generated a complaint.
Not the structure, the shed, apparently.
The structure.
Chicken coop.
Yes, generated a complaint. In answering the complaint, the, the city has liability. They have to comply with the ordinance, just the way they're written.
I know, and this, this will stop it, this will stop us from doing that.
Well, it'll stop us from regulating accessory buildings.
No, it will stop us from demolishing buildings that are.
They're not, name one that's been demolished.
Well, we were about to get one, then this.
We were about, but did it ever happen?
Well, if BZA disapproved it the first time, we probably wouldn't be here.
Did you, are you guys aware that Mr. Ladd stayed in the planning meeting and one of the last planning meetings that he attended about this? It was a chicken coop that was originally wanted, cited, not his actual barn. They were going to destroy a beautiful barn and it was a chicken coop, okay? The complaint was about a chicken coop.
No.
Do you know how many chicken coops are in the city of Macedonia?
Well, what you have to realize is they don't list each individual accessory item. They say it's an accessory building. The barn falls under that classification. So it wasn't right to do, go forward, force them to tear it down, so we stopped it.
Through processes that are in place to.
Yes, and it cost our, our resident two thousand dollars to get here.
It, it, it wasn't, it was a big mess for this man.
But we shouldn't have done it in the first place, and it did go to the BZA.
Well, you know, you can't say we would not have done it in the first place, you have to bring that in. You're protecting the residents against something in the city not being up to the standards of the city.
But yes, I, I'm following, but the barn itself was not cited, that's what Mr. Ladd said. So he said the accessory building that was cited was the shed, which was a chicken coop.
Yeah, but furthermore, nonetheless, it's still an accessory structure.
I understand.
So in other words, somebody could build a beautiful kitchen coop, chicken coop, right next to your house.
Now, the man's nice barn has to be inspected by fire. Over a chicken coop.
No, this is about.
It's a chicken coop.
They need to look at the chicken coop, not the barn.
It's beautiful.
This is about basically it's saying.
They've always known the barn's there, we already know.
Can I have some order here? What?
I was going to say something.
Go ahead, I'm waiting for your, your answer.
Okay, well.
I couldn't hear you because of the babble.
All right, no matter.
I'm speaking to Mr. Westbrook, please, it's not babbling.
Well, it's not in order. It's going against the order when we're having a discussion with someone. You don't want to be carrying on an alternate discussion so that I can hear what she has to say. If that's going on and you need to talk to Mr. Westbrook, so let's follow procedures and you say, I have to tell Mr. Westbrook about this.
Sylvia, you want to come up so that he can, you can talk?
Yes, well, I'll, I'll come back, I'll tell everybody. Okay, here, here's the bottom line of this. Uh, the solution that we came up with, which took a very long time, went through two processes at the BZA, which costs the resident a lot of money. And, uh, someone who really couldn't afford this, but couldn't afford demolishing it either for thirty-five thousand dollars, so.
One process.
The, well, the original process of.
He didn't pay for the second.
Well, I understand, he didn't pay the second time, but the city, we still have to a different hearing. And the only point is this, what we're trying to do is to allow for a situation where there has been a decision that they're going to demolish a building which conformed and another building which did conform to the code. And they wouldn't abolish the accessory building just because they tore down the home. And it's, to me, it is not a huge leap of faith to think that those are rare circumstances, I understand that. But given the fact that this had gone through what it went through and that, I just feel like we need to, and basically, what this is saying is we can permit this, but the council has to approve it. That's what the legislation says.
Why does council have to approve it and not somebody affiliated with the, uh, planning commission or the board, uh, our Board of Zoning Appeals or with their building commission?
They worked, Mr. Engel and Mr. Deemer worked out the way the language was going to be. And I'm just sponsoring it and I believe that, given the history of what's happened here, that's all. Given the history of what's happened, I think that.
What happened?
Well, the happening is, what I said before, I don't.
Yeah, but it didn't happen.
Well, it did, it cost the resident over two thousand dollars.
No, he caused himself that by having a complaint where another resident came on and thought. If that wouldn't have precipitated the problem, then it wouldn't have cost him anything. Nobody said a word to this man until the complaint was filed.
I, I, I'm not saying anything and the, and the complaint, as I understand it, was not about the barn itself. In fact, it was said in the meeting that they're not complaining about the barn. They were complaining about something was under the turf hole and. They were complaining about something was under the turf hole and around the barn. And, you know, that's an issue which can be dealt with without demolishing the barn.
And it was.
Well, but all I'm saying is this, if we look at the history of this, I believe, and I think the majority of council believe, that this should have been handled differently, but it wasn't. So we're just trying to correct it.
So this is a punishment for the administration?
It's not a punishment, Don. It's just really, honestly, it's just a difference of view based on what has occurred, that it might be best not to have it go through this go-broke that went through before and cause the resident damage. That's all it is. There's no big, you know, agenda about it. And I feel strongly that, as well as Mr. Angle and others, I'm sure, that we want to protect, we want to protect
Oh, yeah, third.
the, the situation from going to the direction it might be forced. That's, that's the only...
I don't know that I'm necessarily against it or for or anything. Don't think I, weren't, you know, would anything come to light in the public hearing that we haven't talked about that we don't know, a good reason? I mean, why is the BZA so against it? What is, do they have good, you know, what are they afraid of happening if, if this doesn't, you know, if this was passed?
One member, one member really hasn't, has, from what I witnessed and Don will have to attest to that, all the BZA were very in compliance with what you went up against with the BZA and they have no...
Not the first time.
Not the first time because they didn't have enough information. Here, it's not even about the chicken coop or the barn. It's about accessories outside the yard of this man's property, okay? And that was the complaint, that complaint generated, saying that a chicken coop had to be cut down, but then they used the barn.
All right, but the opportunity was there for Mr. Havlicek to appeal and he did not.
He didn't have the money.
All right, so I made sure that he wouldn't have to appeal and spend the money to appeal. He still did not appeal. Then I made the appointment and went to the BZA and said, "This isn't right."
And I think I understand, I think I understand the whole history, but you, you said that the BZA is against this legislation.
Yes.
Becoming something permanent.
And there are two members that related that.
I don't know what those reasons are. I'd like to hear what they are.
Well, why don't we wait until the council meeting and...
And ask, I think, what's the reason for the whole discussion here?
And that's what we're doing, right? We're making a motion to...
No, and you made a motion to approve, I thought.
No, for, for the thirty days.
No, you made a motion to approve and that's why you wanted to leave.
Well, because he said it has to be thirty days, so we were making his, by his recommendation.
We have thirty days from today to make a decision.
His recommendation of the thirty days. And we approve, is that what I had to say? We approve the thirty days?
Yeah, I, I'm suggesting that the commission, to document for the minutes, make a motion to, when applications come in for text changes to the code, that the commission considers them received at the first meeting in which they see it. Then the thirty-day clock starts.
You're obligated to make a decision, but you don't have to.
Right. Okay, then I make a motion to, as Brian stated, to, yeah, for when we, when we have these text changes, legislation, you know, thirty days starts that first meeting.
I was going by his recommendations. That's what I meant by the approval of whatever he was recommending for the thirty days, second, okay?
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
To deal with this itself...
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was trying to approve, was what he was stating.
But, I think, yeah, so I think we're all willing to hang out and see what happens in public hearing. I'd like to hear what the BZA says, whether it's something valid or not off the side.
Well, they will say something, yes.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we, I'm not going to go to the meeting or anything, but it'd be nice to get some minutes or something like that.
It's, it's tape, which sometimes works.
So who has the final say on that? And does the planning commission or does the council have it?
The council, of course, can pass legislation.
Yeah, but if the planning commission says no, all right, then it takes a supermajority to pass it, which is four. Now, that is the question that's on the table.
Well, no, it's not.
No, it's not.
The charter, one way or the other.
Yeah.
Where, where is it? Where, I don't know what it is. I mean, somebody just said that.
It takes three people to get that legislation, so...
Yeah, I'm just...
No, he said some cities, some...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm suggesting just something you should look at, at council.
Yeah, but it's something to be considered.
Well, maybe, but tonight, I gather, you're deciding, you're not going to address it.
No.
I'd like to know.
Okay.
That was what we said in the first place fifteen minutes ago.
And, maybe recommending it next week? I just, I would like to hear what that input is, seeing as it's got a great reason.
I intend to, I, I intend, I will attend the public hearing and I'll attempt to rebut any questions that's being raised.
The public hearing is at twelve eight?
That's what.
Council meeting. It's seven fifteen and, right before the council. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to table.
What are we tabling?
The, um, language.
Legislation. Tabling action on the legislation.
We have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, so will.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.